Buddy, hello.
It's 4:56 by the way.
No, it's 5:00.
Okay.
Welcome to the October 19th, 2016 Planning Commission Meeting. May I have roll call please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Landrigan, Lee, Manukian.
Present.
Shabazian.
Present.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Very good. May we have the pleasure of allegiance? I will lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to community development. Do we have any reports on that?
Oh, the report regarding the posting of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
The agenda was posted for this meeting on Wednesday, October 12th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
I see.
Thanks.
All right, can I have a copy of the agenda? Okay. Do we have any oral communications from the floor?
We have no cards.
Very good. There are no zoning appeals, there are no old business for Planning Commission items. We only have one item of new business, South Glendale Community Plan and Environmental Impact Report, case number PGPA 1220635. I have the staff report please.
Yes, Chair Protem, Manukian, and members of the commission. On August 30th, 2016, the City Council provided direction to staff to proceed with the South Glendale Community Plan, and also they provided staff for the study of three different alternatives for the environmental impact report for this project. Council at that time directed us to go and have public outreach with the different boards and commissions that will have recommending authority over this project, so that's why we're here today. We've also been out doing an extensive public outreach campaign in the public. We have websites and questionnaires devoted to this, so we wanted to make sure that we give you an opportunity to participate in that. And we do expect that you may be hearing questions from members of the public, so we wanted to make sure you were updated on council's direction to us. With that, I do have a short presentation. I can figure out how to turn this on. Here we go. This is a community plan. It's basically the area in Glendale, south of the 134 freeway, with the exception of a small portion in the Glendale downtown specific plan area that's between Brand and Central, and that goes north to Glen Oaks. Little facts about South Glendale. Forty-six percent of the city's residents live in South Glendale, seventy-five percent of the city's transit users on there. And the reason you'll see that's important is because this is a transit-based plan that we're looking at doing. Eighty percent of the residents in South Glendale are renters. Eighty percent of the dwellings in South Glendale are multifamily dwellings. South Glendale is our economic driver for the city. It's where we find our malls, Americana, Galleria. We also have South Brown Boulevard of Cars. And we also have our major transportation center, the MetroLink Station Larry Zarian Transportation Center. The purpose of a community plan is to tie past planning efforts into one plan. We've had numerous efforts that have gone on in South Glendale since the last time there was a major update to our land use element in 1986. So part of the reason we're doing this plan is to capture all those past efforts into one document, as well as to look to the future, to see how do we want to update our neighborhood visions for that area? How do we want to deal with our commercial corridors? We also need to update our general plans, so anything we do in the South Glendale Community Plan will be a general plan-level document, and that information will be used to inform updates to our other elements of the general plan, such as the land use element, potentially circulation, maybe recreation. We also have our principles and visions. Those are included in our community plans. I know that the commission saw the North Glendale Community Plan when that went through several years ago. We're following the same format. We have the same principles and visions, but we'll be tailoring those to how do they apply in South Glendale. The South Glendale has a horizon of 2035. That's what our planning period is. In that time, we want to accommodate changing land use types. We know there's been a tremendous amount of change that's occurred downtown. We want to incorporate that and describe that in our plan, make sure we provide further growth in the future and describe that. We want to make sure that we retain community character, especially in the residential neighborhoods. I know there's been a lot of concern with what goes on in those residential neighborhoods, how do they look? Part of our plan, and I'll go over it in a little bit, is how are we going to beautify those residential neighborhoods and what tools do we have for accommodating growth in residential areas in the future? We also want to look at citywide policies and regional initiatives that the city's been directed to do. We have greenhouse gas reduction, which we must do for the state. We also have sustainability goals that we have to meet, and we also have transportation needs, not only local but regional, that we need to accommodate. When we talk about the different types of changes that we might see in our plan, we have four main categories. Conserve, that's basically the open space hillside areas that are undeveloped. We don't really have conserve areas that we're including at this point in the South Glendale Community Plan, because South Glendale is, for the most part, developed. We have maintain. Maintain is where we're looking at less than 1% change in the land use, and that would be the acreage of land use. Those are, the maintain areas are mostly our residential areas and some of our commercial. You'll see how the different alternatives deal with changing or maintaining different land uses. Enhance is where we're looking at having up to a 20% change in the land area, so that would be property area, not an increase in density, but just what lots do we think are going to turn over? And then transform. Transform reflects the changes we've seen in the downtown specific plan area. We've had a 30% change in the land since, in the land ownership and development in that area since we started the downtown specific plan. We think in our transform areas and the areas you'll see in our maps in a minute that are shown in pink, we're, at the worst case, that's what we anticipate for percentage of change under a transform area, so.
Which is 30%?
Thirty percent of the land area. One of the things we don't have in our current general plan is identifying neighborhoods as places. We talk about, if you look at our land use element right now, we just have residential neighborhoods, we have multifamily neighborhoods, but we don't really describe them in any detail. This plan will provide a bottom-up detailed description of what is actually in those areas. The general neighborhoods that we're using were ones that were identified by code enforcement a number of years ago, Neighborhood Services. There are, a lot of the neighborhoods know themselves by that. There's old signs that were in the area. We've tried to accommodate that in our new description of the area. So, but I know we've had a lot of questions about that. It's not hard and fast. We just said, this is what the areas are roughly known as. We went and mapped them, said this is what we're going to use. But again, this is a tool right now, just identify the area. It's not in stone. But that's where the neighborhood names came from. You'll see those in a second. And this is like a sample page that you would see in our community plan when we talk about a neighborhood. We would identify the area of the neighborhood, the major streets that it borders, and then what type of growth we would like to see in it, whether it's going to be a transit street, within, where there might be bicycle lanes accommodated. If there's schools in the area or parks, we want to ID those major uses. And then we have a breakdown of statistics for each of our planning area that you will see eventually when we give you a community plan. The main driver for this, the answer is like, why are you doing this now? The answer is transit-oriented development in Tropico. We have an underutilized transit station in South Glendale. We have directives from the state to look at transit-oriented development, maximizing the use of our existing transit system. So, we got a grant from Metro to study this, and they, not only did we study ideas for making transit-oriented development and affordable housing, we also looked at, are looking at per direction from Metro, having green streets, designated streets for transit. We also know that we have a large development that we are going to be seeing. I don't know if this is working. Well, you can see the blue area. That's Glendale Memorial Hospital. We've been told that Glendale Memorial Hospital is going to have to replace our acute care facility. It's just part of a statewide upgrade that's going on in all the different hospitals. So we want to, we've been working with them. We want to make sure that we accommodate their need for growth and replacement facilities as part of our plan, since they are the major economic employer right now that's in the South Glendale area adjacent to the transit station. And you can see the.
And I'm sorry, Laura, but we had some zoning changes or additions to the zoning around the hospitals for their use, correct?
We did a street vacation on Laurel Street to improve safety for the hospital. This would be consistent with some of those improvements, absolutely.
But what about the properties around the hospital? I remember that we went through some alterations. I don't know if it was the actual zoning, but it was so we can make it easy for the hospital to be able to grow.
Right. We actually, it was, we had, there's two activities that we did. We did a San Fernando Road corridor study, which included providing mixed use along the San Fernando Road area, including in this area here. And we also did, as a separate process, a medical services zone for Glendale Adventist. When we met with the hospital, they were very interested in having us put on the medical services zone on their property, except when we explained that you're going to be in a TOD area, we're doing this study, we said we could include some of those medical service zone features that are advantageous to the hospital in with the TOD standards. And one of the issues that we're looking at as part of the plan is having perhaps two different TOD zones, TOD 1 and 2 with different height districts, and that would be to accommodate the need for growth for the hospital. We also have, we also know this is a gateway to Glendale, so we're interested in beautifying that area. We are, it's a major transit area, not only for Glendale Transit, but regional transit, so we're looking at improving Los Feliz and Central, because we know we have a lot of traffic there. And Ceritos Linear Park, we know that there's an issue of getting people in and out of the transit center in a nice, safe manner, also to the school that's on Ceritos. So one of the issues that we're looking at is traffic safety in that area. So when it comes to project alternatives, we have three. We have a no project, which we have to study, which would be keeping development the way it is and not making changes. Under that scenario, we would be looking at if we have build out at the same pattern we've had in the past, we're looking at having between 2,000 and 3,000 additional units by 2035. It's a very low, slow growth pattern. When you look at the fact that we have 80,000 parcels in the city, that's not a lot of units when we're looking at a pretty small number. It's a very small percentage, just less than 1% growth for the city. Under this alternative, this would be our project alternative one. What this assumes is that we make zoning changes to increase the zoning along existing transit paths. We have transit which runs down, our existing bus line runs down Los Feliz, it runs up Central, runs down East Broadway. And we already have downtowns, we're not looking at changing the downtown specific plan area, except for maybe one or two lots on the boundaries that are now parking lots. We'd be looking at incorporating them into the specific plan. But other than that, we're not looking at making changes to the downtown specific plan. But what we would be looking at is perhaps bumping up the densities along Central where we have that existing transit corridor, and making that more useful and friendly to transit, and also putting in, allowing the residential densities to be increased to perhaps R-1250 standards or mixed-use standards to, based on the R-1250 zone, but actually a mixed-use standard that would work, to allow people to do the maximum residential density that R-1250 would allow. Right now, if you look at our zoning, it's our zoning that's the problem, not the density. The density is already allowed, but in order to get that density on a, as a mixed-use project, when it's Zone C3, you have to have a variance, you have to have variances to make it work. What we want to do is change that zoning. So, if this goes through, as proposed, we would be looking at a transform area, potentially up to 30% of the land use area, land area changing, in the Tropico area and perhaps along Central. And again, we don't see any changes once you get to the downtown specific plan area. We're looking at that giving us a potential increase in units, about 2,000 units over a no project alternative.
Does this, by the way, you talk about alternative 1, 2, 3, and 4 alternatives, and no project being the fourth. Do these alternatives, do they fall, for example, under maintain, enhance, and transform? How, do they correlate with the three?
Yeah.
Or the concepts?
Well, the land uses change, it's not the entire plan follows that. Each plan is different, and it has elements of maintain, enhance, transform within each plan. These are, if you think of these as cumulative, you have alternative 1. This is based on, this is, changes based on our existing network as we have right now in the city for transportation. We're looking at essentially bumping up some of the densities, or even if not bumping up densities, making it easier for someone to actually build at the densities we already say you can have. And that, with the exception of Tropico, because Tropico, we would be looking at making changes in the land use, not only for the hospital, but also for the mixed-use area that would be surrounding the MetroLink Station. So you'll see that when it comes. Those are the only areas we think would be transform. And again, that's a larger percentage of the land area that we think will actually cycle and develop within, between now and 2035. When we look at the areas on the map, which you can see that are kind of an orange color, we see those as basically small districts that we think can be enhanced and make a walkable neighborhood, something where people would want to walk to destinations. So we're looking at one about Pacific Edison. We're looking at having one, we know we have Adam Square. We would also have GCC. We know GCC has already told us they have expansion plans. Again, that's the Glendale Community College. We are acknowledging their plans and trying to plan for what they look at for their expansion.
Their south campus.
Yes, their south campus, correct. And then we also have East Colorado Gateway that we're looking at doing enhancements to, as well as Verdugo Road up by, near the hospital. This is, when we talk about improvements, this is what we're looking at doing. And again, this would be through all the different project alternatives. Making walkable streets, having standards for that, increasing greenery, and perhaps widening sidewalks in certain areas where we want people to go. Looking at maintaining neighborhood character. What's out there for each of these neighborhoods that makes them special? What do they want to preserve? So that's what we're identifying. Economic development, we have opportunities, again, especially with mixed use, to modify our standards to make it so you can actually build what our code says you can have. Open space and parks, we're looking, we've always been looking for opportunities to increase that. We know we've had some success with Maple Street, where we have had bike lanes put in, sample projects taking us to the park there at Pacific Edison. Pedestrian safety, especially with schools, and also infill concentration in this project. In fact, all the alternatives is for infill development. And this is alternative 2. As part of alternative 2, not only do we have everything that we would have in alternative 1, we would also look at potential for Measure M. If that goes through, we will have a rapid bus line that would come from Pasadena through Glendale. It would actually come, right now it's shown as coming down East Broadway, then it would go up Brand, and it would go out to Glen Oaks, and then on into the airport in Burbank. So, one of the things we're working with them right now in Measure M is, we think it would make more sense to bring it down Colorado, to have the bus line go down Colorado, and then go either Brand or Central. We're looking right now at potentially making Central the transit street. It's where we have the residential already. A lot of new residential units are going on there. It doesn't have the median that Brand has, so there's a study going on right now, but that's, that would potentially occur if Measure M gets approved. It might occur quite shortly if that gets approved. If it does go in, and again, this is a regional issue, but if we have a regional bus line that's being expanded and going through Glendale, then we would look at expanding our densities for residential uses on either side. So you'll see this cross-hatched area. We're looking at perhaps in that area, bumping up our residential, our high-density residential right now is R-1250. That's considered an affordable density. If you look at the rules for the state, we're looking at increasing that density in that hatched area. That would be in walking distance, so you'd have the BRT hopefully on Colorado. Then we also have our line, which is on East Broadway, so the areas on blocks on either side of those walkable blocks, we're looking at making those perhaps, if those bus lines go through, higher-density residential.
Give me some street boundaries to the north, south, east, west, for that area that you want to bump up the density.
Yeah, if you can see on the map, the hatched area is basically from the eastern boundary of the city through to, well, it'd be down Broadway through to.
Glendale Avenue.
Glendale Avenue. And the same thing for Colorado. We would be looking at essentially both sides of Colorado, but not changing the high school. You'll see there's an area in there that's not outlined with cross-section in there. That is Glendale High School, so we would be, we wouldn't obviously be changing zoning there. But we would be looking at the residential areas on either side of Colorado next to that area.
How would this juxtapose with the East Broadway plan? You already have a plan in there.
Well, we're.
For building standards and so forth.
For East Broadway?
For East Broadway plan?
Well, no, what we're looking at in this point is we're looking at maximizing the benefits that we would get from public transit. If we're going to have growth in the city, we're trying to direct it where we think transit would already be. So we do already have transit on East Broadway, but we don't have transit yet, although we would like to see it on Colorado. So if that rapid bus comes through, then that corridor between Broadway and Colorado, it makes a lot of sense. That's where we should be looking at our density, increasing our density. Right now, R-1250 is our highest density in the city. I just want to point out that a lot of, in the past, a lot of this area actually had higher density than that. It had been downzoned in the 80s and even the 90s. So, while we say we would be bumping up the density, we're actually, we would be looking at returning to a density that used to be there a number of years ago. So, we don't think we would be creating an incompatibility with land uses, since many of the developments that are already there are actually more dense than what we would be looking at increasing. So, in terms, I know some people are really worried, oh, you're increasing the density. In this case, those neighborhoods, in many cases, are already at or above that density. So, that actually, bumping up the transit density actually accomplishes a couple of goals. First of all, it does give us additional affordable housing, does give people who perhaps are transit-dependent, as we've learned, most of our transit-dependent folks do live in South Glendale. This would give them more opportunities for housing and more opportunities, easier opportunities to access bus lines that are regional, not just local. And then we would also be looking at along Colorado itself and along portions of Broadway, we would be looking at creating, perhaps increasing our mixed use. That's where you see the pink area. We think we would actually have, if we bump up our mixed use and perhaps add more, another floor, something like that, for capacity for development, again, to get transit densities, we think our mixed use might, changes in mixed use in this area might actually result in more land being developed. So that's why you're seeing this area in the pink. And then again, we have the area coming down with Central, and we would be looking at affordable housing on the east side, or on the west side, rather, of Central. And that would be Central between Colorado and essentially Los Feliz, and that area there. And again, many, much of that area already was developed at higher density, so it may not be that many lots. We're waiting to see what happens with Measure M and the bus route. If it gets approved, then we will start studying and actually have good data by the time we would bring a community plan to you. That would tell you actually how many units we would actually look at for capacity. Our estimate right now is that we're looking somewhere between 4,000 and 6,000 units additional should this regional transit be approved and the regional bus go in, and should we bump up the densities in these areas.
That's alternative 2.
That's alternative 2. Exactly. I would also like to point out that as part of all these alternatives, we are looking at residential tools. I do have a board which I put up behind you, and I'll quickly go over that. Some of the tools that we're studying is potential implementation tools, small lot subdivisions, looking at historic preservation. Council, as part of their action, approved a historic survey, so you'll see that as part of the EIR, and it's going to be included in your review for South Glendale. We're also looking at perhaps a potential for transfer of development rights. We haven't fleshed that out yet, but that would be a tool, perhaps if we have nice historic structures that we want to maintain, we might be able to offer a developer some incentive to maintain the historic house, perhaps by transferring that density to some other property along a corridor. We're not looking at transferring into residential neighborhoods. I know we've had a lot of concern with that. We're looking at preserving the residential neighborhoods. We don't want to change the character there. We want to maintain it. But in order to do that, there's a lot of pressure sometimes on developers to change their use. If we can get them to maintain their use and take the additional density that they otherwise could have on their property, apply it to somewhere else, we're hoping that will encourage people to do historic preservation. But again, that hasn't been fleshed out. It's an idea that we put forward for review, and so that's where we're at with that. But you will see it. It is included as part of the proposal, and it will come to you.
It's like cap and trade.
Yeah. We also have condominium conversions. I know you've seen that before. Council's directed us to look at it again, and we said we would look at that again in terms of affordable housing when it comes back. It's absolutely, the state has changed their law on some of the density bonuses, or conversions, rather, especially when you have over-density. They are provisions that perhaps it doesn't need to meet the current general plan if the additional density is for affordable units. So we would be studying that and bringing that to you. Parking districts are another item they'd be looking at. Affordable housing because of the changes in the laws. And also we'd be looking at opportunities for public and private investment throughout this area, particularly related to parking. We know that we have a tremendous parking impact in the multifamily areas of South Glendale, so we're looking at creative solutions for a way to solve those. And we think we'll never be able to build that out with public, just public money. The only way, the only solution is going to be some sort of public-private cooperation. And then alternative 3, some of the other issues we're looking at, again, pedestrian-friendly streets, bike lanes, and hubs. A lot of these are related to transit improvements that would come with Measure M. Again, those aren't locally controlled, they're regionally controlled, but they have a local impact on us, or potential for local impact. We're looking at transit-adjacent housing. And again, that may be cooperation with other agencies. It may not just be, it may not be just Glendale. We're also looking at streets gate of enhancements, and then again, expanded transit service and enhancements. So things like if we had nicer bus shelters and things like that. And this would be our third alternative, and we're calling this actually our project alternative. Under sequel, we have to analyze the most, the alternative we think that is going to have the greatest environmental impact, that's going to be our alternative. So, we're calling it project alternative 3, but you can also think of this as the regional transit alternative. What we know, again, these are all building on each other. We had alternative 1, which is existing transit network, existing 2 are building, alternative 2, that's taking into account the BRT, which we think will occur with Measure M or may occur. And there's potential there that it may occur, even if Measure M doesn't get approved, but it may come in at another time after that. We know it's being studied now. We also have, and this is a project alternative, we're looking at multiple, think of it, outside alternatives. So not only do we have the BRT, which will be, hopefully will be coming down Colorado and then up Central or Brand, we're also looking at Space 134, that would be capping the 134 freeway and perhaps having multi-use there. I will show you a slide in a minute about that. We're also looking at, if regional rail comes through, we know it's far out in the Measure M proposal, that we would have extensions of rail to potentially Colorado and then, or, sorry, extensions to Pasadena, and then on out to perhaps Burbank or North Hollywood. We don't know where it would go, but we want to include stops of where we think it would make sense for us. Again, this is a policy document, a policy tool, so we figure, all right, if we know it's coming in the future, where do we want to see that growth? As we know, if you plan for it and you say this is where you want it to go, it's a lot easier for other agencies to get on board with us and say, okay, Glendale's already looked at this, this is where they want it. It's more easier for them to accommodate us if we've already done a lot of the planning for them. So that's what this is. We've identified, we're going to have a light rail stop if it goes in in the future. We would be looking at having one Verdugo City. Should that go up, we would be looking at bumping up the densities, mixed-use densities, again, to take advantage of a rail stop. That's why you see this area in pink. Under project alternatives for alternative 3, the changes in the density are transit-dependent. So when the transit comes in, that's when we would be looking at bumping up the densities. We wouldn't bump up the densities now if the public transit isn't there to support it. But we're looking at planning for the future, saying, yeah, if this happens, we will do this. This is how we will respond. So that's, if you think of this alternative as the future alternative, it includes not only the rail. We also include potential changes to MetroLink service and high-speed rail, those you'll see that in the blue. So, we would be looking at directing a stop by Colorado if we could, as well as our existing transit station, which is down there on Ceritos.
Larry Zarian Transit.
Larry Zarian Transit, right. So we would be looking at adding one at Colorado. If we have our say, this is where we would like to see it. Whether it happens, we don't know. But we do know they are looking at closures for, or have been looking at closures of Broadway Brazil. There's been a variety of proposals that have been out with Metro that they're studying of how do we close Doran, how do we close Broadway Brazil and make the trail, or the train safer? And so, one of, some of the alternatives we're looking at is, okay, what if we do, what if they do have increased Metro service? What if they have a stop? what if they do have increased Metro service, what if they have a stop, we'd like to see it here? If there's going to be a crossover or something to provide, like an interchange to provide access to LA, we would like to see it in this area. So we're, again, we know Metro has proposals, these, again, outside agencies that have an effect on Glendale, we feel it's better for us to study it and say, this is where we'd like to see a change, rather have them, rather than have them study it and say, this is where we're doing the change without, without all of our input. So, again, this is a big-picture planning. The other thing we're looking at doing on this, is there's a green line that's shown. That green is a potential trolley, it's, people have mentioned the trolley off and on for a number of years, running up, it would run from the transit station, that would be the Larry Zarian Transit Station, perhaps at Brand, and then on out Glen Oaks, perhaps eventually to the airport in Burbank. That is the only proposal on here that would be transit, that if it was going to be funded, it would be locally funded. That's, that would not be dependent, at least at this point, on any kind of regional funding. So, when you look at the space 134, putting in a light rail, expansions of MetroLink and expansions of high-speed rail, those are all outside agencies funding, not local. The only thing on here that's local, solely local, that we're looking at, it would be potential trolley or streetcar. And again, should all that transit go in, then we would be looking at bumping up, if the, if a rail line goes in, we'd be looking at creating an enhanced area with more density, more mixed use at Pacific and Edison, the area around Colorado, that, just north of Pacific Edison area. We would also be looking at Pacific Avenue Gateway at the 134, because we would be wanting to have a stop there because of all the residents and the businesses in that area that could use a transit service, as well as Brand Boulevard, and that's what you're seeing on this map. So the red line would be light rail extension, the blue line would be high-speed rail, MetroLink expansion, the green line would be a potential local trolley, and then we would also have the BRT expansion, which we would like to see down Colorado, up either Central or Brand, and then on out on Glen Oaks. So, this is a heavy transit plan when you look at this, and we don't control a lot of it, a lot of it's regional, but this is, this is us getting our ducks in a row for policy, so we can have an impact in directing regional policy, how it would affect Glendale. So if you think of this as the planning tool of the future, just to tell not only our own decision-makers and our own public where we would like to see growth, but also regional agencies that actually have a lot of the funding. And as part of alternative three, there's a lot of transit focus on this, so it's multimodal streets, open space, transit centers, multiple transit centers, looking at multiple activity centers, especially if we cap one, space 134, to do something like Boston did, when they had their big dig. And then we would also have more opportunity sites, because as more transit becomes available, we think that there's more opportunity to handle density next to those transit stops. And on 134, this is a proposal, it's been studied, you've seen it before, just as a reminder, we'd be looking at having walking trails, gardens, event space, transit amenities, basically a place for people to go, basically in the heart of Glendale. So, this is something that we would be looking for accommodating, we're looking at, looking at the environmental impacts as part of this environmental study, but again, this would be, if it gets approved, then we would be looking at doing changes. Right now, the, the big hurdle is obviously funding and design, so-
What's the estimated, approximately?
I don't remember, I'm sorry, I don't recall, I just know it was a lot of money. But, on the other hand-
It's a good estimate?
Yeah, it was a lot of money. So for the environmental impact report, we had a notice of preparation that went out last month, and it has closed, we're taking comments, we just finished taking comments on the environmental impact report. What the environmental impact report is going to study, these three, these three project alternatives plus a no project. As part of the environmental impact report, we are doing a new traffic model, the city just completed it, so we will be getting that information, we're also including a greenhouse gas analysis that we have to do for compliance with regional law. We've had a lot of public process that's going on now, we're going to continue it once that EIR comes out, just like we did for, for other plans, we give you a copy of the EIR, we'll give you a copy of the plan, and we'll have presentations on that. We think we will, it's, it's very likely we will have a public hearing before your body, during the public comment period of the EIR, just to make sure that there's a lot of opportunity for the public to hear from the experts and to hear from you, so you can ask questions before a final EIR comes out. So, we're anticipating that we will have the, a draft EIR sometime out in the spring, we're looking at perhaps February, late January, early February, that's our target date. So, and generally, that's a sixty-day public review period for that. At the same time, we'll also, we'll also have presentations on the plan itself. A lot of the environmental information, we need to inform the different alternatives of the plan, so, it's hard for us to finalize all of the project description until we know what those impacts are. So that's why we're not giving it to you today, we're kind of explaining what are, what are the issues that we're looking at, just like we explained it to council, but we want to make sure that you, you understand that, we are working on it, and ultimately, when we get the environmental information, we're going to do, we'll be tweaking the plan to make sure that it's consistent with all our other elements of the general plan, land use, circulation, recreation, et cetera. And, we do have a website, we want to make sure everybody is aware of it, they can go on the city's website filling out a survey, we have an English survey, Armenian survey, and Spanish survey. I've been assured they all say the same thing, I can't read some of the languages, so I hope they are. We also, all the documents that we prepare, that we provide to you, we are posting on that, that website, so anybody can see, anything we've given to the public, it's all there. And, we also are having an event, we're encouraging the public to come out, they can provide input on the South Glendale Community Plan, it's going to be the Halloween Spooktacle, it's going to be at Cerritos Park on the 29th. Flyers went out to all the kids at the, at the South Glendale Elementary Schools, so they've all been invited, and the general public is invited, so we definitely want to encourage people to attend. It's going to inform pedestrian plan as well as the South Glendale Community Plan, so the more people we have out there, the better, so we would love to have people come.
Costumes are voluntary, though, right?
Well, not for staff, we have to wear them, kidding. Yeah, but we would love, we would love to see kid, kids and their parents. Comments? We are always taking comments from anybody on any aspect of the plan they'd like to comment on, we have a website for that, people can email us, again, they can go on the city's website, download any of the exhibits they want to, comment on those, there's a survey, they can send it in, they can email it to us, or they can mail it, snail mail, and here's our address. And that concludes Staff's presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one question, Laura. 134 rail line, is that going to be a regional?
Well, there's space 134 that they're looking at putting in, and also down the, the 134, they're looking at potentially a transit extension of the fixed rail, the light rail.
By day, you mean Metro?
Metro, yes.
Okay. So this is a light rail project, actually, the 134, is this the extension that you said would connect from-
Exactly.
Pasadena?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, and we know it's, I forget what the date is for, for, it's far out, I want to say it might be 2040, but it's out on their plan, it's included in the plan, but it has a far-out date for actually happening. It's the BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit, that we think would happen short-term, should this Measure M be approved.
Okay, and this has nothing to do, of course, with the gold line, it's not an extension of the gold line, or we don't even know yet?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
There will be, there is going to be a presentation like this to the Transportation and Parking Commission on Monday, and Alan Loomis is going to be presenting that, he's, he is the knowledgeable one when it comes to all the different aspects of Measure M. So I fully expect that group to have a lot of discussion about that, and we encourage anybody who's interested, please watch that. Eventually, you'll see that when it comes to you, but at this point, I just, I just don't know it.
Is that this Monday?
This Monday, on the, I think it's the 24th. And then we're also going to have a presentation, another community outreach presentation, to the DRB. In terms of approval authority, you have the approval authority, you, or not approval, you have the recommendation authority to council concerning the community plan, and then obviously you're going to, you have an ability to look and make comments on the EIR, you'll need to consider the EIR when you make your resident, when you make your recommendation to council. We envision that we will be meeting with the DRB concerning the design aspects of the plan, we will be meeting with Transportation Parking Commission concerning the transportation aspects of the plan, they will be making their recommendations to you, and then you'll be making the final recommendation at council. And at this point, we don't know what the other impacts may be, we may be taking it to other commissions, depending on what we see in the environmental impact report.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other com-
I, I just have a couple of very brief comments, that's it. By the way, very well put together, I know with limited resources, sometimes it becomes prohibitive, but you folks have done a very good job at this thing. First, the historical survey is of utmost importance, for reasons that we all know why, because it gives clarity to the development community, as well, as well as to the community and the historical society, and folks like us that care about the assets that we, we have and we want to preserve. So that's, kudos, that that's in it, and it's going to be done, that's terrific. Second, you know, it's refreshing to see that the plan is subject to the transit districts and the transit developments that you have in mind, as opposed to putting the cart before the horse, right? So I mean, this is a good thing, and it's important to also emphasize that unless, for example, you have the funding for the transit, transit aspirations that we have, this plan will not kick in. So the density will not kick in until such time that the transportation is in place. And I think, you know, that's the most important part of this element. And that does it for me, Mr. Chair, pro temp.
Very good.
And I would like to point out one thing, if you take a look at the graphics that have been prepared for this, the illustrations, this is done by our urban design staff, so I would just, just give them kudos, it's a lot of illustrations that you see up there, that's Chris Higardi who's hand drew those. We also have our maps that are done by Jason Robertson, and obviously you mentioned, all the historic work, the historic context, as well as the surveys being managed by Jay Platt, so I just want to acknowledge that there's a lot of people working on this project, so.
Just, just, just one more, real quick, I promise to be brief. Housing affordability is of a big deal issue right now in the state of California, and I know that needs to be addressed regionally. However, I do believe that the concept of the small-lot subdivision can help in the city of Glendale for housing affordability. Now, I understand that on a regional basis, when you have proper transportation, you can transport people to centers of employment, people can have more affordable houses than the core, the metropolis is and what have you, I get all of that. But in city of Glendale, I think this small-lot subdivision, this is an important issue. And of course, I, I don't know much about the, the entitlement transfer rights, but we will get to hear about those. Now, there are no standards as of yet for small-lot subdivision, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We had a draft ordinance that was done several years ago, we were working with Woodbury College to test it, and then, when LA stopped theirs, because there were some issues that they were, that were coming to light, they've had a small-lot ordinance for a number of years, and sometimes after a number of years, they discover that there may be some issues with their standards. As people live there, problems come out. And so, LA went to review their standards, and they changed a lot of them, so we put ours on hold to learn from what LA had going on. And then, when we were working with the, the South Glendale Community Plan, council said, all right, put this on as part of the implementation features for the South Glendale Community Plan. So that's why you're seeing it now, it comes up as part of the toolbox for how we're going to deal with our residential uses, affordable housing. So right along with condominium conversions, and the need for having affordable density standards, perhaps we may be looking at additional density incentives to have a better design on an affordable housing project. But these are all things that would be coming before you.
Great. All right. All right, with that, we are moving on to the next agenda item, community development department updates, do we have any?
I do want to give you one update, there's Army Corps of Engineers and Los Angeles County Department of Public Works, they're holding public meetings about, about certain areas in Glendale, because there's study going on with, for flood hazard area. So I just want to point out that those meetings are going on, the public would see, is going to see those, but it's, is, again, it's not a Glendale project, that's Army Corps of Engineers and Los Angeles Department of Public Works, but we are working with them right now to find out what's going on with the study, so I know there's been a lot of people that are interested in, and I can just tell you, we are, we're working, it, it's not our study, we don't have that information, so that's why we're, we're working with them to find out what impacts or potential impacts to Glendale maybe.
Well, I tell you one of the potential impacts, and that's, your insurance rate may go up if it's newly designated flood, flood zone, so, having said that, if you can, if you can let us know when these meetings are in, whether or not they're open to public, we'll make sure, we'll make sure that we'll attend it.
Very good. Do I have any comments from the commissioners? And with that, we can adjourn.
So moved.